Again, that would be great. We've just tidied up some of the resolutions as well in order to sort of pick up on some of the issues that have been raised during the questions. I would like staff to publicly advise of the error and the correction and report Option 2, paragraph 7.8. So, John, if you would like to report on that.
Bring your attention to point 7.8 on page 15 of the report. We had left in there the annual operating costs of temporary chlorination, which now we'll put to the front as a monthly operating cost because we're not likely to be chlorinated for a year. So we thought we'd express that as a monthly. So that needs to be amended. 7.8 will read, maintenance slash ongoing costs of $270,000 would be made up of $210,000 with a wellhead maintenance and $60,000 for increased water quality monitoring. And that's the new text.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's the cut and paste.
Yes, thanks to Chris for picking that up for us and doing our proofreading.
Very good. All right, so, thank you. So now we'll move on to the resolution. So let me just note the changes to the resolution. So they want to move up. So we've turned four into a request to staff to report through ITI, which will come back to council with recommendations on the update on the cost of undertaking further improvements, on monthly progress with implementing the wellhead improvement works, with the draft water safety plan for approval when completed, and with a review of the inspection regime for the monitoring and assessment of below-ground wellheads undertaken prior to June 2017 and since. Because what that will do is it will enable us to actually look at what the inspection regime was before and after, and whether the inspection regime changed, whether the standard changed, or whether in fact we didn't have a sufficiently good standard before, and is that something that really was throughout New Zealand, given that it really came to the fore when the Havlock North incident occurred in August 2016? And if we could move up the list? Sorry? Oh, yes, and we've added, approve the installation of temporary chlorination for up to 12 months. That means that if it were required for more than 12 months, it would have to come back to council for another decision. So that makes it clear that we're only authorising temporary chlorination for 12 months, up to 12 months. The item number seven is, and this picks up the item that was left to lie on the table that was referred to, that was to be referred to the council meeting on the 22nd of February, and that resolves that long-term, it, yeah, long-term, do we have to say it? Long-term, the council wants to retain its unchlorinated drinking water system relying on secure bore status. Accordingly, the government opposes any government move to, what?
You see the government of course.
Oh, optimism, optimism. Accordingly, the council opposes any government move to remove its ability to rely on secure bore status to comply with drinking water standard New Zealand, and opposes mandatory permanent chlorination. And then item eight just simply notes that that resolves that matter and staff no longer need to report back on the matter it's dealt with. And then item nine, ask the chief executive to undertake an overarching, independent, external review of this matter so that the council can provide assurance for the future of our unchlorinated water supply and report back to the council. So that's to the full council, not through ITI, but to the full council. And that's just to pick up on some of the issues. So I'm willing to move this. Oh, sorry.
Can I just say something that I think's important in light of what's happened with The wording as it stands implies that Christchurch City Council would rely solely on secure bore status. And I think the case for Christchurch is they have never relied solely on secure bore status. There are other processes, such as the monitoring, the rigor of the monitoring programme, backflow monitors, maintenance of reticulation system.
Right.
And that's important, it's a very important point to make because should central government come back to you and say, well, you have said you're just relying on secure bore status, you have to say, secure bore status and other processes that keep our waters safe.
Yep, take that out. And. To rely, move its ability.
Opposes, just opposes any mandatory permanent chlorination.
Yeah.
Just, accordingly, the council, yeah, opposes any mandatory permanent.
But is there a way of signalling to government that we don't actually want them to pick up that recommendation about the secure bore status or chlorination? Or does it matter?
Well, you can. I mean, I suppose you can do that anyway. But I think the point is, you've not relied on secure, reliance, you've relied on secure bore status, but you have also augmented that with all those other important processes.
Yeah.
Do we have solely, keep private just.
Yeah, well, accordingly, the council opposes any government-imposed mandatory permanent chlorination. All right, so, question?
Just before the debate starts, number three, will that be put separately?
It can be if you want to.
Yeah, I think it'll make it easier for people to speak to, and I can't imagine anyone's not supportive of all the others. And once three's put, then most of the others fall into line anyway, but.
Yep. I won't have it as two separate debates, though.
No.
No. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just clarification on the amendment to number four. Because, I mean, there was comment made that councils can't attend committee meetings. That's actually not, it's not, in the past, councils have been unable to.
It's only for cycleways, yeah.
Well, regardless, like, so there was comment around whether that could be the full council given the significance, and I thought there was going to be amendment to that effect. So I would like to either signal an amendment to number four in that regard, that it should be the full council, given that there's other committees, like finance and performance, like audit and risk, who actually do have some role in this. And I don't think it's fair just to go to one committee that excludes other councillors. Because I don't think we really want to get into a detailed debate at council around all these different things. I think they're so significant, we should have opportunity as a full council to consider them.
I very strongly disagree with that. I think that it's important to have the lens of the subject matter committee making the recommendations to council.
But who is the subject matter committee?
Rather than staff making recommendations directly to council. But that's by new, you can move an amendment.
Yep.
You move an amendment that it's to report to full council.
To the full.
Do I have a second for that?
Or to a full committee of council.
There's no second. It's failed for want of a second. Thank you. So I've moved the resolution. Is there a second for it? Andrew? Right, well, look, nobody, nobody wanted to be in the position of considering a report that contained a recommendation for chlorinating our pristine and wonderful water supply. Nobody ever wanted to be in this position as a city. We have been in this position before, where a recommendation has come before council, where we decided not to chlorinate. And that was two years ago, in 2016, in September, a recommendation came forward that because of the risks around the northwest shallow bores, that it was recommended that we should chlorinate in that area. And we chose not to do that. The focus on the shallow bores arose because of the Havlock North Inquiry. It was always on this council's agenda for a very long time to stop reliance on the shallow bores and to go for the, for additional deep bores in those areas. And that is a programme of work that's still being undertaken. But we have closed off the shallow bores. We agreed to do that as a matter of urgency, and we brought that work forward. There were risks, and we decided as a council that weighing up those risks, providing people with the information that they would require, knowing that we have an excellent process for testing, second to none, because we value our pure water supply, we were able to make that decision. And it was against the advice of staff, and it was against the advice of the medical officer of health. But that was the decision that we made. This one's slightly different because we're not just talking about one area of Christchurch that can be isolated. We're talking about losing secure bore status from, borehead status from bores that are right across the city, 103, I think, in total. And of course, there are a significant number that are no problem at all because they've all been built above ground since a particular time. But the below-ground boreheads do present us with this problem. In many respects, it doesn't matter whether it was as a result of the Havlock North Inquiry that there has been an increased sense of risk and risk aversion in terms of the sign-off of the engineers, but we cannot rely on the status, the secure status of our boreheads. And that is not a risk that I'm prepared to take. And the reason I'm not prepared to take that risk is because although the risk, the probability, the probability is slight, it is unlikely that there would be any event. We haven't had any transgressions in significant rain events that have already been mentioned. So the risk is very small, but the consequences, they're huge. And when you think about the potential consequences, you take an area of Havlock North, and the number of people that were affected there, three to five people died, and there were thousands infected. There would be hundreds of thousands potentially exposed here in Christchurch, and how many deaths could possibly occur? So although the risk is small, I mean, sorry, I'm going to say, risk is two things, it's probability and consequences. So although the probability is small, the consequences are high, this puts a red flag around the risk for me, and that's why I'm moving the recommendation. Andrew?
We've heard a lot of detailed information today by way of the answers to the many questions that have been put, and also the information that was provided in the report and in previous briefings as well. And having considered all of that information, in my mind, the way forward is reasonably obvious. We've lost our secure status, we need to regain that as soon as possible, and I believe that the steps that we need to take in the meantime are pretty clear. As has been said, the reality is that the risk of contamination is low, but the consequences of contamination could be probably more than significant. We as a council have got a responsibility to take seriously the advice that we've been provided and the information that's been put in front of us. And we certainly have a responsibility for the health of our residents, the health of our citizens, to make sure that we do the responsible thing to ensure that the quality of our water supply is not a risk to public health. Adding chlorine to our drinking water isn't something that I'd vote to do lightly, and I do that only in the context of the advice that we've received from the medical officer of health. And I agree to it only on the basis that this is only a temporary measure, and that it only needs to be a temporary measure until such time as the wellheads are once again able to be signed off by the engineers as secure. And as we've heard, there are arrangements already in train to allow that to happen. And there's an understanding on the part of the engineers of what the interventions that are required are, and there's an agreement that once those interventions have been completed, then sign-off can and will occur. So I've got a very high level of confidence that what we're talking about here is temporary, will be temporary, and that we've got the ability and the confidence to do what needs to be done as quickly as possible. So I don't support permanently chlorinating the drinking water, and the decision we're making today definitely does not do that. I do support temporary chlorination for public health reasons on good and responsible advice for the shortest time possible, and expediting the programme of work that's required to achieve that as quickly as possible. So I'll be voting today in favour of the resolutions.
I'm just going to go round the table now because it just makes sense that everyone's indicated to me that they want to say something, so, Vicky.
I will also be supporting it. I think we're in a situation where we either do this or we get told to do it. I cannot imagine for a moment that the medical officer of health can let a situation where he perceives there to be any risk to public health and he would not act on that. So as I perceive it, we either do this or the medical officer of health will tell us to do it. So it's going to happen one way or another. I think what's really important is that this is a public health issue, and I totally get why the medical officer of health could not do nothing. He cannot sit by and watch renal failure in a six-year-old or something like that that could have been prevented. I don't think as councillors we can either, actually. Every day we deal with issues of public safety, we deal with them in cycleways and pedestrian crossings and traffic lights, everything. So safety has to be one of the things that we look at very, very carefully. My focus is on making sure that we get long-term, safe drinking water without chlorination. And if we are going to persuade the government that we are worthy of an exemption, given the recommendations of the Havlock Authority, we actually want Alistair on our side to do that. And I want to see that they will want to see and want to know that we will act if there is any possible threat to public safety. So I think long-term, I think what we do short-term actually impacts our capacity to have an exemption long-term as well. I think there are three, three things in here that give me some comfort, give me more comfort. One is the addition of up to 12 months in recommendation three. One is recommendation seven, where we actually make clear what our view is about the long-term non-chlorination of Christchurch water supply. And what I'd also like to see, but I don't need by way of a recommendation because I'm sure staff will agree to it, is that we actually provide some unchlorinated water for those who want it in public spaces, whether it's libraries or whatever else. But I don't think it needs a resolution in order to make that, make that happen. So I will be voting in favour of this.
Thank you. Yanni?
Yeah, I think what's, rather than canvass the arguments that have been put forward or the points that have been made, I mean, I don't think any of us wanted to be in this situation. I personally value Christchurch's precious water, and, you know, there is a responsible course of action that we have been asked to take. And, you know, I think to oppose putting and chlorine on a temporary basis would not be responsible at the moment. Having heard from the medical officer of health, and having heard that the assessment of the secure bores, that they are no longer secure, so I think we do have to make this decision today. I think there's two other questions that really do need to be answered, and I think, you know, the focus has to be, as has been said, getting our permanent, sorry, getting the temporary chlorination finished as soon as possible, and allowing our water to be unchlorinated. That has to be the focus today, what we need to do to get there. But there are other things that we also need to pick up on this, and that is a full audit review of how we got into this situation. In 2003, there were learning points that were identified through a committee, the need to modify some wellheads and other items to reduce risk, the need for improved inspection and testing procedures to identify potential problem areas and deal with them before the problem occurs. So, you know, 15 years ago, we actually knew that there needed to be improvements, and it will be very interesting in the report and audit that gets done to see what was done as a result of that, what was done after the earthquake. Because I think some people will really want to understand with the millions and millions, hundreds of millions of dollars spent on infrastructure repairs and on assessments, how we could have had such a dramatic change in less than 12 months' time, from a system being okay and secure to suddenly being unsecure. I think the other thing that's really important is that the secure bore status is only one way of reducing risk. And I hope that councils will look at things like the syringe contamination of our wellheads that won't be covered under this repair programme, that will be hopefully identified as something that we should also be doing to reduce the risk. So, you know, I would love not to be able to, I would love to not have to put chlorine into our water on a temporary basis, but I feel that that is the responsible thing to do. I guess as someone who has a young daughter and thinks of the health consequences, even though the risk is low, but the consequence could be huge, I think we need to do the responsible thing today. I would just make the point that this should be going to the full council. You know, I wouldn't expect the Regent Consents Committee who lost the accreditation or the council monitoring the accreditation. It's a full council consequence, as we're seeing today, and it should be the full council that looks at the response, not just one committee. Because many other committees, whether it's finance and performance, audit and risk have a role to play in this, have already had reports around this, and I think we need the full council taking responsibility.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. Look, first of all, I want to thank Dr Alistair Humphrey, the DHB and our staff. I think it's an example of working together, and I think that's the key, and I think that that should give a lot of reassurance to everybody in the city. So thank you all for the work you've done. I think that's crucial. I'm totally opposed, like everyone around this table, with regards to permanently chlorinating our water in the city. And I think, as Vicky said, items three and seven add reassurance to us and to the city that that will not be the case. If you really look at the 60 days to implement, if we take from today, making the decision today to temporarily chlorinate our water, we've got 60 days to implement. If we expediate the process, which we've also asked our staff to do, we're looking at between seven and nine months. So although we're saying 12 months, we are hoping to get that done as quickly and as professionally as possible. So I think, I'm hopeful that we'll be finished this within 12 months, well, short of that. As also has been suggested, said that risk is a combination of likelihood and consequence. The likelihood is very low, however, the consequence for the population of 300,000 is extreme. And if we look at the most vulnerable being infants, children and the elderly, and we have a medical health system which is pretty well under pressure anyway, what hasn't been mentioned is if we have a health system that is inundated by illness through contaminated water, there are those in our community who need assistance with health that may not get it, and their life risk would raise as well. So it's not just those that are affected by contaminated water. So I will be supporting this. I think item eight, the last one with regards to a review after all this, because I would hate to add pressure to our staff, I would like them to concentrate on expediting this and getting to an end zone where Alistair and our staff are happy and can sign off and get back to normal. So, but I think following all this, to have a review is extremely important, and that should be to full council as discussed and put up there. So I will be supporting this, but I would definitely make sure that it is a temporary measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn?
Thank you. I support all the recommendations, which to me are obviously sequential and hugely proactive. So when you look at these here, these will stand as part of the paper trail for us, looking back. Why I say that is if you look at any crisis or any, you know, the Havlock North Inquiry and the two stages has traced the systemic breakdown. So we are acting now, we're being proactive before we have a public health crisis. And the government will look at this, and they will want to know from subcommittee onwards that we've taken this seriously and that we're obtaining all the information, getting our reports in place, acting. So I'm fully behind this. The, if you look at anything that's ever gone wrong, major tragedies in New Zealand or public health outbreaks, they can always be traced back to governance and their attended decision-making issues, management, et cetera. So the way I look at this today, we're addressing these systems today to head off any mandatory treatment, which if you look at stage two of the Havlock North report, is pretty strong on the fact that appropriate and effective treatment of drinking water should be mandated by law. Provision should be made for exemptions for mandatory treatment only in very limited circumstances. The way I see this, we have to earn number seven, okay? We have to do this stuff today. If you want to be chlorine-free permanently, the short answer actually is you've got to put in place the chlorine treatment now. So if we want to build this case, this exemption to the government, we have to be sensible about it. Not everyone wants it, but we've got to do it now. And ensure that we are permanently chlorine-free in the future. So that's about all I have to say on that, but I urge you to please support the recommendations like everyone else. I don't want the water to be chlorinated, but we have to think of Christchurch's reputation, we have to think of the manner of the council, we have to ensure that our drinking water remains chlorine-free in the future by actually chlorinating now.
Okay. Aaron?
Well said, Glenn. I'm, wow, this is, this is a big decision, and it was asked before why some of my fellow councillors kind of wish we weren't here and why are we in this situation? We're in this situation because we put our hand up to be councillors, and sometimes there will be some really, really tough decisions to make. Today is one of those. This council actually didn't chlorinate the northwest, which is where I live, where my three children live, the youngest of which, when you made that decision, was months old. And I applaud you for that. I'm happy, and I'm happy to take that risk. We did boil the water that our baby had, and either that or we gave it Coca-Cola. Just kidding. But the, and that will be, if we, if we chlorinate, will actually be one of the unintended consequences of chlorinating the water in Christchurch. Christchurch has some of the most purest, beautiful drinking water in the world, and when it starts to taste and smell like a swimming pool, people will opt for other drink options. That will be a consequence. Bottled water sales will go up, that will be a consequence for a council that is anti-plastic in the environment. I've been contacted by a number of constituents in the last few days around this, all asking us not to chlorinate today. All of them. Not one contacted me and said, please chlorinate the water, which leaves me with a bit of a dilemma because we're now risk versus consequence, and every single day, people face, face risk in their lives. When you cross the street, just under 40 people a year are killed as pedestrians crossing the street. Havlock North, between three and five people who were very immunocompromised at the time that they contracted that illness. There's the amount of sugar people have, there's drinking alcohol, there's going to the beach, 115 people a year drown. There's risk in life every single day. And this debate today is about do, are we willing to take a risk with our water, as low as that risk may be, but the consequences very, very high, versus the quality of that water and not messing with it? Now, I've heard the debate that we need to stand together with Alistair and the DHB, which I'm a part of, and make a united front that we've, we have made a balanced decision here and come up with the right outcome for our people for this period of time before we get back to our untreated drinking water. That is absolutely true. But the part of that debate is there's all those people who don't want their water treated, they would rather manage their own risks in life. And those people aren't being represented in the debate at this point, but we do need to consider those people because they are so passionate about the water of Christchurch. I do agree that we need to be responsible, but by falling into line and being responsible, that doesn't necessarily send a message to the government that we can't. that doesn't necessarily send a message to the government that we can't manage our water. It may also send a message that we're willing to fight for our water and for our water to be untreated. So let's balance that up as we make our decision.
Thank you.
And I'll wait to hear the rest of the debate before I decide on Number Three.
Thank you. Phil.
So look, I think what's important is that this, what we're deciding today isn't only around the chlorination, obviously, it's really around accelerating that whole wellhead repair programme. And it's a combination of interventions that is going to work so we return to be able to not have to chlorinate. So, and I think that it's essential that the partnership with the Medical Officer of Health, that that really continues, so that in fact, Christchurch can be a special exemption status. And I think that having continuing that partnership in a constructive way, that will help give us credibility, not only to the Christchurch people, but also with the government. And I think it's been said, but I'll repeat it, there's no real change in the water quality. It is as it was before. What has changed and has become clear today is actually how the standards, the application of those, has been changed by the engineers, and we've got really no option. And I think it's encouraging that in fact, in August, and as the ITI Committee considered a lot of these reports, that Christchurch wasn't only compliant at the time, in fact, we were complemented, and Alistair referred to that today. I think retaining that the committee as part of a process that we work through is really, really important. I think that that way, this quite technical work can be focused, and in effect, we can become quite effective, so in fact, we work with the whole of council.
Dion.
This is a situation that I would not have liked, as many of us have said, to be in, but the fact is that we are. If we don't make a decision to temporarily chlorinate this water today, we're most likely going to be forced to do it. And that has dire consequences for the future of what we're trying to achieve with our unchlorinated water for the long-term future. I mean, I value the unchlorinated water in Christchurch. I've got a lot more years to live, I hope, and I would hope to live those years with unchlorinated, unchemically treated water. We are in a really good situation where we do have water in our city that we can draw on, that is naturally treated in such a way that it has low consequences to the drinking that we have. I wanted Number Four to come back to council, to the full council initially, but a compromise that we had was Number Nine, where we said that we're going to have an overarching review of this process, so that we can understand why we've got to this point, how we're going to be better, so that we can make those assurances to our people in our city and to the government and to anybody who visits our city, that when they turn the tap on, they are going to be safe, that they are not going to get sick. And there is no question in anybody's mind about that. And I think that is a very, very important place for us to get to, especially in light of recent circumstances that have happened around the country. One of the things that I've been thinking about recently is actually around the testing regime that we do have, and I do wish that in the future, we could have very quick testing, such as like five-minute tests to understand where the pathogens are coming. And I think there's some good research that I hope one day is going to actually get there, so we can actually get really quick testing and then answers about what's in our water, so that actually, all water suppliers can actually have an instant understanding of what's in their water. At the moment, I think it's 24 hours or something along that line. You know, technology's in an exponential curve, I think, you know, we've got to prime research and development opportunities there for somebody. Anyway, I value living in a society, or in a city where water is pristine. I will support temporarily chlorinating the water, but only so that we can get that secure status to make sure that we are doing what we can, everything we can, so that our water can stay, you know, untreated for its life.
Thank you. Pauline.
Right, thank you. A lot of what I was going to say has been said, some culling as I go along, but I'd also like to reiterate the thanks to Alistair Humphreys for joining us, with us on this serious issue, and also to thank you for recognising that the council staff are doing exemplary work and going above and beyond its responsibility to supply and protect our drinking water, and to also recognise John and his team for the work, the proactive work that you have done in this space. So we know that we're experiencing far more frequent and more intense rain events and flood events, and it's these events among others which are putting our drinking water at risk currently, and will continue to do so until we seal these boreheads. And we have looked at every option to avoid this. It's the last thing I ever thought I would agree to. But we are faced, as been said, with low-risk, high-consequence situations here. But I want to assure you that the ITI Committee, Infrastructure, Transport and Environment Committee, will actually have a microscope on this programme. Actually, we have already done that. We're very aware that getting these bores sealed and our secure status reinstated and the chlorine removed is an absolute priority and to happen as soon as possible. I also want to note that in May last year, after Stage One Report, the ITI Committee already instructed staff to include water quality monitoring reports into the Three Waters Reports that come in every two months, and to include the minutes of the Canterbury Drinking Water Reference Group, which was formed in response, to receive updates on the programme regularly, and we requested the council to write to government with our opposition to enforce chlorination, those last two were in the recommendation today. It's already been said that the resolution states up to 12 months, which gives me some comfort. It's a temporary nature, and we would have to revisit this resolution if that's to change. But I also note that the infrastructure required to temporarily chlorinate is significantly different than that which would be required for permanent chlorination, with an increased cost as well for permanent. That also gives me some comfort in the temporary-permanent concern. So reluctantly, I must also agree to the temporary treatment while we strengthen our multi-barrier approach to our water safety for the people of Christchurch. But we also need to embrace this situation as an opportunity to up our game, and in the long run, we will be assured of the safety of our water and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike.
Thank you. I totally oppose the addition of any chemicals to our pure, pristine water. Obviously, there's times when water does have to be chlorinated, like after the earthquakes. What we do know, following obviously the removal of that chlorination, there have been no incidents, no transgressions, no problems with our water supplies. Those wellheads haven't changed, they're still the same today as they were before. Obviously, the provisional status on our water supply has changed to unsecured, but everything else is the same. When the previous council made the decision to not chlorinate the water in the North West, that was a good decision. The actual risk of contamination was higher than what we're facing now, but obviously, fewer people were affected, but there were still thousands of people that would have been affected had there been an outbreak. But you knew that risk then, and you made that decision, and what happened? There were no outbreaks, because the risk, the probability of that contamination is so low. We are obviously aware and it's brought to attention, the problem. I have a few issues with the whole timing of this. You know, the world doesn't stop turning because it's Christmas, and we do have a recess committee, and I personally think more should have been done. If it's truly serious, it's going to be 90 days from the time it was reported to council to the time we chlorinate the water. I think that is too long, and it needs to be addressed, and we need to take on learnings moving forward. And I do struggle, you know, when I weigh this up, and I understand if we voted no to chlorinate, what would happen? It would most likely be chlorinated by order. But we do have a right to make that vote. We're not forced to make the vote to chlorinate, we can allow it to be ordered. I still don't agree with comment that there'll be desire, consequences if we do not vote, if we do not vote to chlorinate. There's no proof in that. That's just a statement without proof. I personally haven't made up my mind, I'm listening to the debate, but our water has been perfect, we've been through a lot, it's remained perfect. People were aware after the earthquakes, and they took precautions, no one got sick. We can inform the public, we can give the public the choice of what to do. Thank you.
Sarah.
Thank you. I'm not going to cover ground that has already been covered. My bugbear in all of this is engagement with the community. Now, we've heard that there is no urgency, there's no imminent risk, the delay hasn't caused undue risk thus far, and a further delay, I believe, wouldn't do that as well. As councillors, now that the decision has come to us, we have obligations under the Local Government Act to take into account the views of our community, and one of the times that we're able to not do that is if there is urgency over a public health matter. We've been told that that urgency doesn't exist, and so we should be consulting with our community over this formally. I know that during the cathedral debate, where the numbers were different in the consultation to the final decision, it was made clear to us in the debate that it's not the eyes, it's not the numbers that matter, it's the whys. And while we have a view as a council that probably the overwhelming feedback from the community might be against chlorination, that's just numbers. What we haven't heard from the community is the reasons for that. I've had Facebook messages and posts, those kind of things, some vehemently opposed, some not opposed to temporary measures. But what I have also had is phone calls and emails from people who are concerned that they have had no chance for input. One woman who called me last night, concerned because she had, you know, only a few hours to be able to put any information together to potentially put a deputation to council, for example. And that's been my concern throughout this. We can't just abdicate our responsibilities under the Local Government Act just because it's inconvenient, it's difficult, it clashes with long-term plan consultation processes and those kind of things. This is of high significance, and we should be consulting with our community. Thank you.
Jamie, I'll come to you now.
Thanks for that, Leanne. Yeah, this is a difficult one. I believe that if we'd like to have an exemption in the future, meaning in the long term that we have pure chlorine-free water, then I think the fact of the matter is we need to demonstrate today that we will act and manage risk intelligently, prudently and appropriately, and doing that in tandem and in collaboration with the Medical Officer of Health is the way to go about that. Do I want Christchurch's water chlorinated? Absolutely not. But that's not the question, and it would be misleading to suggest that it was without context. And the context and the reality of the situation is this: if we choose not to chlorinate now, then it will almost certainly be imposed on us anyway, lose clout, lose credibility, and substantially increase the risk of not receiving an exemption going forward, meaning it could likely result in long-term chlorination. So good decision-making is largely about appetite for risk and risk management. Anyone that's been part of a board or an audit and risk committee will recall even the simplest of those risk management matrices, not giving any decision-maker a free pass to ignore risk that has a low likelihood and high consequence. And that's exactly where we're at. At worst, it puts you in the red zone, where you need to take immediate action, and at best, it puts you in the yellow or moderate zone. So simply put, a decision not to do this now, as much as I don't like it, would mean that we've failed as governors. And even more simply put, it's clear that if we want our water to be chlorine-free in the long term, and I most certainly do, then we need to make this prudent, albeit difficult decision today and support the recommendation. It's done reluctantly, but the right decision more often than not isn't the easiest one. So with a view to the future and a view to having chlorine-free, pure water in Christchurch, I very reluctantly would support the recommendations in front of us, because I think it's simply foolhardy and putting the blinkers on and letting emotion ride over prudent decision-making as a result. So I will be supporting these recommendations today. Thanks.
Thank you. Anne.
Despite having an excellent report in August stating all council suppliers have achieved full bacterial compliance, a result that I understand has not been achieved before, new engineering assessments of Christchurch wells have revealed some may be susceptible to contamination, especially in heavy rainfall events. There is a slight probability of our drinking water being contaminated, but the consequences of this risk are huge. As a council, it is our responsibility to provide safe water, drinking water, and a duty of care to protect our residents, especially the vulnerable, the young, the old, the pregnant and the immune compromised. The steps recommended in this report, these recommendations will achieve this: temporary chlorination. While continuing a very thorough work programme and review process will achieve protection for our vulnerable and ensure that permanent chlorination will never have to be considered for Christchurch water. I am particularly reassured by Point Seven and Nine, and hope it will also reassure our fellow residents that we as a council are vehemently opposed any move by central government to require us to chlorinate our water permanently. Therefore, I am in full support of these recommendations today.
Thank you. David East.
Thank you. With only a couple of speakers to follow me, it's probably been said pretty much around the room, and I do concur pretty much with the thoughts that Jamie expressed a few moments ago, in that whilst we find ourselves in this invidious position, and we are taking a morally responsible approach, should we choose not to, I believe the Medical Officer of Health has no other course of action but to instruct us to chlorinate anyway. Having said that, I am impressed with the programme of works that's proposed, but I would suggest to staff that they produce a list of the repair programme and the order that they intend to attack this repair, and hopefully, in some fashion or other, we may be able to consider a zoning approach to returning to a non-chlorinated water in parts of our city. I've said before in other debates, a fairly contentious issue, that I'd die in a ditch over it, I'd die in a ditch in this one. Perhaps there'd be a few people that want to fill the ditch in before it happens. But for me, this is an absolute prime feature of Christchurch, that we do have the best water, I believe, almost in the world, and there are a lot of precedents that I believe that we can put a case, even if government did decide that they wanted to chlorinate in the country, that Christchurch is unique. We do have a pristine water supply, and the processes by which we extract our water, by which we monitor our extraction and the quality of our water, puts us, I believe, streets ahead of many other municipalities in this country, and that we need to retain that status forever and ever.
Thank you. Jimmy.
My friends visit me from overseas, they always admire me to settle in Christchurch. One expects every day I can breathe the fresh air, the other ones, when I open and turn on the tap water, I can drink the purest water, so they admire me here. As a local authority and also city council, we have the opportunity and the responsibility to provide good quality of drinking water to the residents. This is our responsibility. But right now, we need to look at the fact, why is the fact now? Because we, our security status, you know, from the water supply has been changed, changed from the provision secure to unsecure. But how do we to fix this problem? So we need to work together. I know we all prefer, you know, it's the permanent, it's the kind of, not any the coordinate, we drink the pure water. But in the temporary or in the procedure, you know, we have to through this procedure, we can achieve our long-term goal. But procedure, absolutely, we find the root cause is from all those below-ground bores or wells, the kind of hits, you know, need to be improved, need to be the fix. Then this one is big, but simultaneous, you know, because even the risk, the probability is low, we all are aware, even if it's low, but it's not the zero, still more or less the probability or percentage. So the procedure for this temporary... So the procedure for this temporary coordination of water actually is functioning to reduce those percentages, reduce the risk of this kind of, you know, the contamination. So we have to face the factor. So this is simultaneous way, you know, simultaneously we can do it. And also, I'm happy, you know, we have timeframe. Within up to a year, we can fix those problems and back to the normal situation. We can all enjoy the daily basis of the purest water in the world. And also, in here, you know, we take these two kind of ways. First one, you know, we can back to the provisional security status from the unsecure to the secure. The other one, we can meet the kind of standard of the water supply in New Zealand, the standard. Last one, we are all aware, the direct general of the health, the issue of statement, but we need to continue to review this one to keep the quality to acceptable, the water as purest water in the world. So I support this recommendation.
Thank you. Ray.
Yeah, I'll be quick because I think all the issues have been covered. But just to reference the shallow bores in the North West, it's important to understand the only reason we made that decision is because we could shut off those shallow bores. Otherwise, we wouldn't have approved that at all. We can't do that in this case, even though, you know, we've discussed it about the zones and what have you. But the wells obviously cover the whole city. I mean, you know, clearly this is a short-term inconvenience, discomfort, annoyance for people. But, you know, water quality is the biggest issue that local and central governments all over the world are going to face over the next 10, 20, 30 years. And what we're doing now, yes, there is short-term inconvenience, but actually, we will have a very, very secure water supply system once we've done this. And maybe it takes this type of event to really kick things on and maybe do stuff that we should have done, that maybe should have been done in 2003 or whatever it was. But that will happen. So I think short-term inconvenience, but we will end up with a much safer water supply system in the end. And then we'll be back to our lovely Christchurch quality water.
Thank you. Look, I'll just close off the debate. I want to thank initially councillors for the way that you've participated in the debate today. I think all of you have made a significant contribution to the discussion and I want to thank you for that. I'm gratified that in the knowledge that someone else would intervene and make the decision in our place, you still chose to make a decision today. And I'm also grateful to staff that they made the decision to relinquish the delegation that had been made under the Health Act and to restore the decision to the council. Even though it's for a temporary measure, I think it's really important that it is the council that debates it in a very open way and the way that we have. I also want to, as others have acknowledged, the council staff, the Medical Officer of Health and in her absence, the drinking water assessor, who have collaborated throughout the process. Last year, the programme of work that was in place was good enough to retain compliance. And within three months, that went to not good enough and we lost our secure status. Now, I'm not one who says that this is a result of increased risk aversion on the part of engineers or others without evidence to back it up. I'm very much an evidence-based person and I want to see the evidence one way or the other. Maybe what was being done before wasn't good enough. Maybe the fact that there were no transgressions back then, as there have not been subsequently, maybe that was a matter of good luck rather than good management. We've all said we value our pristine groundwater supply. And I guess this is my challenge to the council. When we look at the fact that we test more than we legally are obliged to in order to maintain that confidence in our groundwater, we need to ensure that the inspection regime for our boreheads is also second to none. And that's something that I think that we will get out of this, as Raf has said, an opportunity for us to actually consider whether, well, we're going to have to live up to the expectation in order to go to central government with the absolute commitment to retaining our ability to not chlorinate our pristine water supply. So thank you all very much for the way that you've participated in this debate. And on that note, I will put the resolution. All those in favour say, oh, now wait a minute, we want to deal with item three first, which is the temporary chlorination provision. So I will put item three. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. Would you like to just put your hands up? So Aaron Kewan, Mike Davidson and Sarah Templeton. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I will put the whole resolution. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. So I would like now to move that we...